The Monroe County Legislature Division Commission will now come to order with a clerk. Please call the roll.
Mr. Broth.
Here.
Mr. Brew.
Here.
Chairman Carbon.
Here.
Ms. Nicolay.
Here.
Ms. Ortiz.
Here.
I would like to welcome those in attendance this evening and thank those that have attended the other two meetings this week and men in the legislative chambers. We will now begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As you may know, this is the third of three public meetings for public input of the redistricting commission. The commission will consider the public comments prior to releasing the proposed changes in the boundaries of legislative districts. The redistricting plan will be adapted as a local law and the public will have the opportunity to comment on the proposed law as part of the official public hearing and the adoption of local law. I would also like you to know that the law authorizing the new district boundaries is subject to permissive referendum. I would now like the clerk to proceed with the calling of our public speakers forwarded to address the commission. Go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
Oops, sorry. You will have two minutes in which to address the commission and just kindly conclude when you're, um, kindly conclude your remarks when the timer sounds. Our first speaker is Elizabeth Maxwell.
Good evening, everybody. Some of you know me, some of you don't. Um, so I'm here to ask a couple of questions, first of all.
First of all, this is a public comment. This is not a question or an answer.
Okay, but I still have questions and I think that the public deserves to have the answers.
They'll go into the record. Thank you.
The public would like to know the process. We would like to know when all the meetings are scheduled. We want to know when the drafts are going to start to come out. We want to see the drafts. Are you going to publish them? Are you going to make the districts fair, especially in the inner city, and not redistrict new, we elected people from the primaries out of their districts? That's fair to everybody. Each one of you seated at this table should have to work just as hard as your competition and your efforts and get to know your voters because that's what democracy is about. It's not about playing one-sided games. So please do the right thing for the people and make the matter fair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Karen LaBraco.
Good evening, members of the county legislature and election commissioners. My name is Karen LaBraco. I live at forty-eight Adams Street in Brockport. I appreciate the opportunity to give some input this evening. Commissioner Nicolay, a week or two ago, I saw a TV interview that you did talking about the reaportment of the county legislature. You made the points that district lines should not divide communities and should be of a logical shape. I'm just remembering what, okay? And, um, you know, I heartily agree with that absolutely a hundred percent. You stated that adjustments might be needed because of population changes that are reflected in the 2020 census. I've not studied those numbers to know how numbers have shifted, but you have that information and I certainly trust that you'll be using that. The fourth point you made was that taking that all into consideration, you didn't see that any major changes are needed. And that final point I find to be seriously flawed. I live in the village of Brockport where the portion west of Main Street or Route nineteen is in Legislative District Two and the part east of Main Street is in Legislative District Twenty. The town of Sweden is similarly divided down the middle, partly in LD Two, partly in LD Twenty. And the Sweden Village subdivision is, has a very interesting squiggle right through it. And so it's no wonder that people are really confused about who their representative is because one side of the street is one, one side of the street is another. And so, so much for that dividing communities piece. Looking at Legislative, okay, District Twenty on a map invariably leads to an expression of what the heck and a crick in your neck, really. It starts in the eastern half of the town of Sweden, goes to Park, but all, not all of the town of Ogden, and then good part into Greece. There's no way that this district has any sense of being a community and there's no other way to describe its shape other than weird, contrived or and/or gerrymandering. Other districts have very similar funny shapes. I cannot testify to them and their communities, but I can to LD Two and LD Twenty. And I hope that you take the comments of all the citizens in those communities into consideration. This is an opportunity, really, I think, for you to demonstrate integrity to the citizens of Monroe County and I certainly hope that you don't fail us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Uh, the next speaker is Kevin Berry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I live over in Penfield. Okay, to me, it's readily apparent that this redistricting is an example of political cynicism. Factions of the county legislature seem to be rushing it through to ensure that they and not their successors will establish the districts into the future. This is with intentional scarcity of communication and transparency and a lack of respect for the residents. We're seeing a political motivation about to disrespect, possibly disenfranchise and dishonor the people that you're supposed to serve. I'm calling on you to establish a redistricting process that's in the best interest of all Monroe County residents. I'm calling on you to hold well-publicized, open and transparent hearings in every legislative district in the county before moving forward with redistricting. I'm calling on the Republicans to work with the Democrats and take the time necessary to establish districts that are well-thought-out, protect the interests of the residents, neighborhoods, neighborhood associations, towns and villages without gerrymandering. It's time for wins not to be the result of vanquishing opponents, but of fair and open processes that lead to improvements for the people you serve. It's time for the people to know that you care more about them than about power, political futures and parties. We need leadership, not politics, and we call on you to take the politics out of this process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Charles Ennis.
Thank you, Charlie Ennis from Greece, New York, Legislative District Number Six, currently represented by Mr. Fred Anselo, who's a Republican who lives down the street from me, actually. I'm not aware of where I drive. I live at ten twenty-two Rumsen Road. I'm in my seventies. My lifespan goes back to the nineteen forties. And I'll tell you, uh, the fire district boundaries in Greece go back even further than my lifespan, back a hundred years beyond that. And it seems like, and I would echo the comments and sentiments of the previous speaker, who I heartily endorse and agree with in his plea for transparency going forward in the process, that you folks finally recognize, maybe we need some fire district redrawing boundaries in some cases. I think it's appropriate, different towns here in Monroe County, New York. Also, I think it's prudent for us as we go forward in the political process here, Dr. Carbon in particular, you can recognize this with the boundaries that currently exist, not only in the town of Rodicoy, but the town of Greece. Gee whiz, it certainly is a maze. I mean, it really is. And I'm in one of the better-drawn ones. So you should take into account all the factors that the previous speaker, Mr. Berry, recommended to you folks and take it to heart. I think it's a good thing and do away any shred of, uh, of people who bring up a concept of racism or bigotry or all these other negative concepts, which unfortunately our contemporary reality is rife with in the world of, uh, shall I say, since Mr. Trump came on the national political scene. We need to mitigate that as much as possible at the local level. And here we have a great opportunity to do it in Monroe County, New York. And I think with the help of the populace, with transparency and openness, fairness and equity, these processes can be dealt with and all voters, age of eighteen and up, open more aggressive policies for more people to vote in districts which are fairly distributed in the county. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Barbara Grosh.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Grosh. I currently live in Penfield, though I haven't yet had the opportunity to vote in the county ledge election there. Tonight, I'd like to start by talking about my former county ledge district, which is District Eighteen. One of my former legislators from District Eighteen, Tanya Conley, once told me that the eighteenth district had the widest socioeconomic spread of any district in Monroe County. That surprised me because to me it felt like a wealthy district. And she said that in the neighborhoods she represented in East Rochester, the median family incomes were approximately the same as the property tax bill in the high-income neighborhoods in the district where she lived. Since learning that startling fact, I've taken a closer look at poverty in the eastern suburbs to see if it was inevitable that they should stick such a poor neighborhood on such a rich neighborhood to make such an odd district where needs are very different. And I found that it's not necessary at all. The first thing to notice is that the village of East Rochester, which is a natural community of interest, has been split into two. So a village which should be a community of interest has been divided and each half has been stuck on to another wealthy district, the eighteenth in one case, which goes into wealthy parts of Perrington, and the tenth, uh, which runs into swanky parts of Pittsburgh. So that was dismaying. But then I kept looking and I saw that there's even more. There are two more low-income neighborhoods tucked nearby, about a mile away, as the crow flies, is the pines of Perrington, uh, which is a low-income housing project and it's in District Eleven. And also nearby, there are a couple of trailer parks on the far side of Route four forty-one, which are in District Fifteen, which runs from East Rochester all the way up to the shores of Lake Ontario in Webster. That's my current district, by the way. So we have three low-income district neighborhoods which are close together, could be contained within a district that's only a couple of miles across, and instead they're divided into four electoral districts which are dominated by high-income residents. These low-income neighborhoods have a lot in common. They need county services to work well. They need good bus service because a lot of people don't have cars. They need childcare subsidies so that they can go to work. They need MCC to be affordable and high-quality. They need the public defender's office to work well. All of these are services which probably none of their wealthy neighbors think about at all, ever. So this natural community of interest has been cracked, divided up into several districts, some of which have that weird elongated jagged shape that you picture immediately if you hear the word gerrymander. This did not happen naturally by some geographic fluke. Cracking this community of interest dilutes the voting power and disenfranchises the residents. I urge you to take the time to examine Monroe County neighborhood by neighborhood and consult with the residents. It will be a bit time-consuming, but we have the time. We don't need to finalize district lines for over a year. There's plenty of time for a thorough audit of underserved communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elaine Schmidt.
As a member of the League of Women Voters and as a constituent of Orundicoy, I would like two to four weeks to study the maps when they are presented to the public and I would like to be able to access the maps online in a user-friendly manner. I'd like to feedback from our communities to be taken into account by the redistricting committee and adjustments made to the maps based on our community's input. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Edgar Santa Cruz.
Hi, good evening. I work in the twenty-eighth district in the one-four-six-zero-six of Cold. It is split into two, all right? Or at least maybe there's even more that I'm not aware of. I'm going to start off with this. Look behind me and look at the people that attended for the past three evenings or the public hearing. Is that true representation of Monroe County? I don't believe so. So what you're doing right now is the same old as far as you're not going out educating the individuals, educating community members and residents as far as what this process is because you're getting the same old results where not representing, you're not representing the true representation of communities, neighborhood associations, individuals that come to work every single day, individuals that are suffering. So you're representing only a fraction of what your community members are actually are. And the census is underreported, so that number actually doesn't represent a true accurate picture of Monroe County. And we all know that because people don't want to fill out forms for whatever reason. So when you're doing this, it's not well-thought-out because you don't have one-hundred percent of everybody's interest in mind.
Our next speaker is Jane Bleege. Yes. Do you just spell that last name for me?
Sure. B-L-E-E-G, like it go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm a Rochester resident and I don't usually come to meetings like this. I'm in Josh's district. I'm here because I have such a deep belief that if we can restore some of the core democratic processes, our country will be a lot better off. And one of the biggest issues that I'm concerned about is gerrymandering. And I absolutely believe that if we could eliminate gerrymandering and get back to fair elections, that would make a huge difference in the well-being throughout our country. So we here in Monroe County have an opportunity to do that and to set the stage to be a model for the whole country. Or we have the opportunity to rush things through, to continue with the gerrymandering and the crazy splits that folks have just talked about, and to continue to sink in the way we have been sinking, where different sides can't even talk to each other, um, all sorts of violence breaks out. That's not the country I want to live in. I want to live in a country that is based on fair elections, fair districting, people listening to each other. I'm a Democrat, but if the Democrats were in charge right now, I would be speaking with just as much energy, just as much concern if they had the power to continue gerrymandering. So it's not a political issue in that respect for me. It's a how does our local county and how does our country operate? We're going in the wrong direction. We need to make some changes. Getting rid of gerrymandering, doing fair districting is one of the most straightforward, simplest ways to do it. You have the power to start doing that and I hope that you will do it. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Mike Bleege. Bleege?
Bleeg.
Bleeg. Mike Bleeg.
I happen to be her husband, so we live in the same home, the twenty-fourth district. There aren't many bleegs in the world, so, um, anyway, um, fundamental to me is that you said something earlier about logical outlines of the different districts and we don't have that right now. We need to get a much more geographically compact, similar, uh, shapes of the different districts, especially in Monroe County where we're pretty much of a rectangular-shaped area. Not everybody is spread out equally in on those areas, but we can keep our shapes pretty standard across that area, across the various areas. So I strongly recommend that. And I also strongly recommend as part of the process that before any final decision is made, and I'll say a month or more before any final decision, that you provide the maps, uh, you know, two or three, whatever number of options you have, to the community, you know, by each district so that people can give you specific information on, on what they view about those different alternative approaches. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Candace Rubin.
What do I see in maps?
Okay, hi. When people are surveyed about government, we're discovering that, we've all seen surveys, we've all seen focus groups that say people have more car, more faith in used car salesmen than they do in their government officials. I want to review some of the things that have happened with the barely dominant Republican majority in the last few years. The Cable Act, which went down to resounding defeat. The group of the Breakaway Dems, which was a, um, obviously their fate didn't, you know, didn't, um, wasn't any better than that of the Cable Act. And finally, we're seeing, we're seeing this secret redistricting process, which is intended to benefit one party. Also, I'm taking particular affront at some of the campaign ads that some of, at least one Republican is putting out, Stacy Witbeck, intentionally giving incorrect information, saying nice it is in favor of Metro Schools, um, saying that John Baines is in favor. That's totally made up stuff, but yet your party is promulgating it. And each of those acts is a threat to good government. It's a threat to our democracy, which is a very fragile thing. We need independent redistricting. We need an honest process in the end. The dishonesty, the graft, the power grabs hurts all of us and particularly your party. It has not been a winning tool. So I hope that you will take this into consideration and again, when the public is enlightened, with the Breakaway Dems, I did canvassing and I know what I heard when I told people what was actually going on. So people want good government, they're going to elect it, and again, the truth always wins. Thank you.
I'll read the submissions now. This first one was from kind of after the meeting started last night, so I didn't have a chance to do it, so I printed it out today. This is from Jonathan Harden. Redistricting commission members, the Charlotte community demands that District Seven be redrawn to not include the neighborhood of Charlotte and the city of Rochester and District Twenty-Six should include that neighborhood. This was discussed at our most recent Charlotte Community Associate, Charlotte Community Association meeting. Our community deserves one county legislator and Mr. Marinetti has failed to represent the northern portion of our neighborhood and hasn't communicated with the nonprofit neighborhood groups in the area for years. He refuses to return phone calls and emails and seems to not be interested in our community. The development in Charlotte, the port and Ontario Beach is too important to our region to have a representative that doesn't communicate with the neighborhood leaders. We have been for years trying to work with our local leaders on smart development for our community and we deserve better. We most urgently deserve upgrades to the Roger Robach Community Center. Not only that, but we ask that District Twenty-Six be extended to Lake Ontario and Beach Avenue to give Charlotte one representative. The current and past legislator of District Twenty-Six has always been in communication with all the residents of Charlotte and this is what our community deserves, one legislator that represents the entire community and we can confirm that District Twenty-Six has our back. Thank you, Jonathan Harden. Our next, um, submission was also from late last night, from Pamela Morrow. Members of the legislature, this note is to demand your efforts to ensure accurate representation in our area and no gerrymandering. Communities have been disrupted and there is no valid reason for districts to be so caught up other than to manipulate vote outcomes. Districts should be drawn evenly and fairly. We are watching your efforts and hold you accountable for all results and we are entitled to have our concerns addressed prior to decisions being made. Thank you, Pamela Morrow. Our next submission, uh, was from Candace Harvey. Members of the legislature, this note is to demand your efforts to ensure accurate representation in our area and no gerrymandering. Communities have been disrupted and there is no valid reason for districts to be so caught up other than to manipulate vote, vote outcomes. Districts should be drawn evenly and fairly. We are watching your efforts and hold you accountable for all results. Thank you, Candace Harvey. Our next submission is from Jen Adams. I'm a, I am concerned as a voter that we will not be given time to gather information and express opinions in relation to the redistricting proposal. Please allow the voters of Monroe County the information and ability to take part in this proposal. Thank you. Our next submission is from Ann Pindar. Monroe County legislators, it has come to my attention via the League of Women Voters that there is an attempt at gerrymandering in Monroe County. We read every day what is happening around the, around the county and did not expect this from our own county. Oh, I'm sorry. What is happening around the country, but did not expect this from our own county. New York is known for its fair and free elections that respect the right of every person to vote. Please do not adopt some of the voter suppression techniques that are happening around the country. Districts should be drawn carefully so as to maximize fair representation for, for its citizens. As the league has stated, there is no rush. It takes time to do this right and to have as much representation, representative participation as it should have. Monroe County voters like myself are keenly interested in your talking, in your taking the time. You need to fairly and properly conduct this important process. Thank you for your attention to my concern. Sincerely, Ann Pindar. This was from Jeffrey Galusha. So the Trumplicans have no viable platform capable of working successfully, no meaningful legislative agenda, and the only way you can stay in power, which is what this is really all about, is to rig by virtue of gerrymandering the elections in your favor. What a bunch of tools. I believe you are morally bankrupt, unethical, and are basically a bunch of idiots, plus an embarrassment to society. Jeffrey Galusha.
Where's the maps?
Where's the maps?
Our next submission is from Melanie Blank. As a very concerned citizen of Monroe County, I strongly insist on your efforts to ensure accurate representation in our area without gerrymandering. Communities have been disrupted with no valid reason. The only goal is to manipulate vote outcomes. Districts should be drawn evenly and fairly. We are watching your efforts and hold you accountable for all results. Thank you, Melanie Blank. Our next submission is from Catherine Richards. How can you live with yourselves? Such a lack of integrity in so much, in so much that you do. Drawing district lines should be open and, should be an open and honest process with input from many in the input from many in the county, not just your few Republican with ulterior motives. The more sneaky actions you take, the more support you are sending to Democrats. Get your act together in the name of truth and democracy. Catherine Richards. This is from William Spellman. To our county legislature, as a member of our county, I'm demanding your efforts to ensure accurate representation in our area without any gerrymandering. The idea of anything less than these efforts is not what you were elected to do. Communities have been disrupted, and there is no valid reason for districts to be so caught up, other than to manipulate vote outcomes. Districts should be drawn evenly and fairly. We are watching your efforts and will hold you accountable for all results. The idea of anything less than such efforts is a disgrace to our county, people, and our country. I also urge you to be far more transparent about your sessions so that the county communities can participate in the democratic process, something I learned in my high school civics class. Among others, I also want to be a fully informed voter, and keeping important issues from us is less than any elected official should adhere. Transparency, openness, and truth are bedrocks of our country. I urge you to remember that members of the county legislature work for the public. Thank you, William Spellman. Our next submission is from Chris Stevens. I demand open government, especially in redistricting in Monroe County. The only reason for closed doors is to hide something unfair or illegal. Open the doors. Let the light shine on redistricting. After all, your sworn responsibility is to represent all of the people, not your self-interest and not the interest of your party. Chris Stevens. Our next submission is from John Wilts. Greetings. I am unable to attend the public hearings on the Monroe County redistricting process, but I'm glad to have the opportunity to submit written comments. I urge the commission to keep towns and villages and city of Rochester neighborhoods intact on the redistricting map and not create a gerrymandered map which seeks to dilute the voting power of any particular segment of the county population. In particular, disenfranchising lower-income city of Rochester voters and voters in lower-income neighborhoods of the inner-ring suburbs by combining their neighborhoods with more affluent suburban areas in the redistricting process is an attack on our democratic process and subverts the democratic principles on which our country was founded. The 20th District is a gross example of gerrymandering, which should be corrected through redistricting and several other districts such as the 6th, 7th, 15th, 16th, 17th, 19th, and 26th, should be reconfigured to allow for a fair representation of our towns and city neighborhoods. Thank you for leading a fair, transparent process to correct some of the gerrymandering that has occurred in the past and put Monroe County on a positive path toward fairer and fuller participation in our democracy for all residents. Sincerely, John Wilts.
Excuse me, Mr. Cliff. Could you please leave those LV numbers down for me?
Yeah. The 6th, 7th, 15th, 16th, 17th, 19th, 26th.
Thank you.
Our next submission was from Frank Orienter. I know that fair and honest redistricting is a difficult challenge. I hope members, especially elected officials, remember their oath of office that they have an obligation to all citizens of Monroe County to undertake a transparent and honest drawing of lines that will give any and all candidates running for office in the future an equal chance to represent the totality of their constituents. Democracy requires participation. It is the sacred trust that voters of all parties place in the hands of elected officials to encourage full participation of citizens throughout the country. Democracy is not a game where partisan political one-upsmanship was what our founders envisioned. Please do our, please do your duty to all Monroe County citizens and draw fair lines in an open manner. Thank you, Frank Orienter. Our next submission was Thomas Gillette. I'm not able to attend the public hearings, but I strongly urge the county legislature to accomplish this task of redrawing county legislative districts in a fair, honest, bipartisan manner. To do otherwise, as you apparently intend, is an outrage. Why would the majority attempt to move forward without involving others? In a time when Republicans in particular are undermining confidence in our democratic process, acting in this matter only further erodes public faith in a fair, unbiased election configuration. Thomas Gillette. Our next submission was Mary Lee Miller. To whom it concerns, as a voting citizen of Monroe County, I am appalled that Republicans in the legislature intend to unilaterally draw district lines the way they see fit, rather than by census numbers as they are supposed to do. It is so clear that the current Republican agenda is to keep, regain, and grab control in any way possible through any means. Gerrymandering is a pitiful tactic that is deeply rooted in racism and classism and serves no good purpose. It serves only to disenfranchise voters and keep greedy politicians in positions of power and further bloat their coffers of corporations at the expense of the public good. I demand a fair redistricting process in Monroe County that is done across party lines in a manner that centers the public good and not big money and politicians' political gain. Thank you for your time, Mary Lee Miller. Our next submission is from Deborah McLean. Ladies and gentlemen, I have lived in Monroe County for over forty years and have often felt that my vote has been neutralized by partisan line drawing. In this time of heightened concern about the stability of our democracy, it is time for an impartial commission to draw district lines. Deborah McLean. This submission is from Jared Muberry. Your plans for redrawing election districts alone stinks. You've lost my vote as a Republican. Jared Muberry. Our next submission is from Joanna Cummings. To the Legislative District Revision Committee, just a few questions. Number one, who specifically is drawing each district map that the commission is considering? Two, what methodologies and practices are the map drawers using? Three, how many maps is the commission considering? Four, when will the public see proposed maps? Five, what is the commission doing to ensure bipartisanship in the drawing of maps? Six, what is the commission doing to ensure that the maps incorporate meaningful public comment? Seven, what is the commission doing to ensure that the maps do not privilege some voters at the expense of others based on political affiliation or race? Eight, what is the commission doing to ensure that the maps accurately reflect Monroe County's voter registration demographics? And nine, what records will the commission keep of its votes and deliberations, and how will it take the, how will it make those records available to the public? Thank you to advance for the answers, Joanna Cummings. Our next speaker, or our next speaker, our next submission is Carol Hoffman. The redistricting in Monroe County has become apparent that the Republican-controlled legislature has deemed it unnecessary to extend the period of time whereby citizens of Monroe County have little or no say in this issue. As I had a commitment on Thursday, and Hamlin being on the other side of the county for me, I find this narrow timeframe to thwart my ability to express my displeasure with the Republicans' limitations to appear at the meetings, so to hear from all of us. I can only conclude that they are only interested in keeping the status quo versus creating an opportunity for representative government, said Carol Hoffman. Our next submission is from Sue Hugh Smith. Dear President Carbone and county legislators, I am reaching out to you as a concerned resident in Monroe County, and I hope many, many others will contact you as well. It is disheartening to see how the redistricting process is proceeding. Fair districts that give voice and influence to the voter should be more important than protecting partisan power. I was disappointed in the legislature for rejecting County Executive Bellows' suggestion for an independent commission, and further disappointed to learn that the committee is only holding three public information sessions prior to releasing the draft and intends to only hold one session afterwards. The remarks from Majority Leader Steve Brew at the hearing in Mendon that the lines will be drawn by Republican operatives only serves to confirm that the current process is tainted and does not put the community first. I would like to see more public hearings after the draft is released, a public comment period, and a responsive governmental body that consults with nonpartisan experts. Thanks, Sue Hugh Smith. The next submission is from Bill Sowers. Very disappointed in the remote locations of your public meetings. How about holding a meeting in populated areas like a city neighborhood, or Grease, or Henrietta, or areas where there may be lots of community input? And how can I get a copy of the proposed redistricting maps? Bill Sowers. Our next submission is from Kathleen Kane. Dear commissioners, my name is Kathleen Kane, and I am a resident of Legislative District Sixteen. My family and I have lived in Arondequay since 1989. I have two points for your consideration. The school districts of Arondequay are currently divided between two county legislative districts, namely LD Sixteen and LD Seventeen. Legislative districts should follow the boundaries of government entities. The current boundary between our LDs runs east to west, so Sixteen is in the northern two-thirds of the town, and Seventeen is in the south. As you well know, the town has one school district on the west side and one on the east. I respectfully ask the commission to consider aligning the LDs of Arondequay more closely with the boundaries of West Arondequay Central School and East Arondequay Central School. Although I am a resident of West Arondequay, I am speaking out of concern for both communities. I don't intend to stoke any conflict between the two school districts, but the reality, the reality is that they've existed for decades and developed into somewhat different communities of interest. Of course, legislative districts must have an equal number of people and must also be compact, contiguous, and not favor either party. Exact concurrence with other civic boundaries is not always possible because of these other LD requirements. However, I believe you can do better than the current configuration. My second request is a very simple one. When you release your district map, please post your proposal not only in portable document format, but also in a searchable format such as a Google Map, and a format that is readable by mapping software. These formats would empower the voters of Monroe County to examine the plan in detail and offer specific constructive feedback. Thank you for your time in taking on this challenging task of redistricting. Kathleen Kane. Our next submission is from Joan Robey-Davison. Good evening. While I spoke at the hearing last night held at the Monroe County Legislative Chambers, I had additional thoughts that I would like to share. As I stated, I live in the city of Rochester, and I've worked in city neighborhoods since 1992. The current plan bears little resemblance to established neighborhoods and indeed cut through them with little regard for the residents who live in these neighborhoods. In my legislative district, number 29, it begins on the west side of Genetse River, taking in part of the Maplewood neighborhood, cuts through most of the 14621 neighborhood, and continues on to the city line on the east after going through the Northland Lykeum neighborhood. Neglected in this, in addition to the disregard for neighborhood boundaries, is the growing presence of the Latino community, primarily in the northeast quadrant of the city. With more than seventy thousand residents who are identified as Latino or Hispanic, their voices dispersed through several legislative districts. I would ask in addition to aligning with established neighborhood boundaries that you find a way to carve a district that gives the Latino community a unified voice in the legislative process. Thank you for your consideration, and I look forward to seeing draft maps for specific comments and concerns. Joan Robey-Davison. Our next submission is from Rebecca Collins. Members of the legislature, this note is to demand your efforts to ensure accurate representation in our area and no gerrymandering. Communities have been disrupted, and there are no valid, there is no valid reason for districts to be so caught up, other than to manipulate vote outcomes. Districts should be drawn evenly and fairly. We are watching your efforts and hold you accountable for all results. Thank you, Rebecca Collins. Our next submission is from Maryeek Jarabek. I insist that the upcoming redistricting process in Monroe County be done in a fair and equitable manner, do not just force through a partisan map that gerrymanders districts and splits up neighborhoods, towns, and cities in ways that disenfranchise voters. Voters from all parties should have a voice in the redistricting process. Maryeek Jarabek. That was the last public email submission.
Will you just state your name?
Martha Clasplin.
C-L-A-S.
Roses are red, vases are blue. This sucks, and so do you.
Thank you very much.
I don't mean to extend the meeting, but welcome to the west side of Monroe County. Thank you for holding this public hearing for us tonight. My name is Martha Clasplin, and I live next door in the town of Clarkson, where we Democrats are constantly striving to give voice to the concerns of all our residents in our town government. That is what this redistricting is really all about, isn't it? Giving all citizens a choice in who represents them from the local level of governance on up. We are here at the local level trying to work out a fair deal for our county redistricting. I believe in the simple gospel of power that says he who takes the most from others ends up losing the most when power dynamics change, which you know they will, and that he who gives the most in civil fairness to others will end up benefiting the most when power dynamics change. All the Democrats are asking of this redistricting committee is to keep the end goal in mind: fair representation for all our residents. Mess this up, and it's going to come back to bite you, I promise.
Well said.
Okay, this concludes the public hearing. I'd like to thank everyone for their participation in the redistricting process, and the members of the commission this evening and the previous two meetings. I'd also like to thank the town of Hamlin for their hospitality again this year. The next meeting, the Legislative District Revision Commission, will be announced in the next week. Thank you very much.